Just to clarify a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Stack should be aware there's no court tomorrow, so I wouldn't wait too long.
He did it Friday.
Well, he's not there Friday. But after you stop, we wasted your time going in tomorrow. Two, Mr. Stack does have pending before the court a tax surcer railroad on a parcel of property on 17M. As the board knows, and I don't know if Mr. Stack is aware, we don't have our old assessor. The county is now assisting with us in our assessment duties. They have looked at the parcel. They've analyzed it. They've made a proposal to myself and to Matthew as to what they believe should be valued at. It has not been communicated to Mr. Stack because, as the board is aware, I meet periodically with the tax surcer committee, I call them, which consists of Doug and Phil. And we go over these proposals and formulate an official proper or offer to the taxpayer, should we wish or should we believe it should be modified. As Mr. Catarino knows, we meet tomorrow. But the unfortunate thing is, as I've indicated to Mr. Stack in the past, some of these tax surcer railroads go on for years. As you know, the town of the...Terry Landville lasted for 10 years.
I've got a little small building, sir.
I'm not saying that's good policy, but there are a tremendous number of these complaints. We deal with them on a need basis. And status-wise, his has been reviewed. A proposal has been made by the county, who is our new assessing unit, and that'll be discussed tomorrow. And then my intention would be to make it known to Mr. Stack and write, so there's no misunderstanding as to what the proposal...
Who's the one that's not doing it?
The county.
There you go.
Yes.
Is it John McCarron handling it?
Yes. 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 What we do now, we contract with the county, Mr. McCarron, and he's performing our...
No, lots of township do that. Deer Park.
Right, exactly. He's performing our...
Whatever.
Chester, Chester. Good, that's good.
And your parcel was specifically requested...
And I gave Matt several soul cons. Two different brokers, that's better than appraisal. Appraisal and opinion.
But that is... I think we were saying in the past...
I know New York State don't like business people.
Dennis, you just kind of...
No, that's all I have to say. I just wanted to make it known, and that's where it's...
Where is it now? Why?
In approximately a week's time, two weeks' time, you're gonna get a letter with a proposal for a settlement.
Okay.
I can go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Stack.
I get it.
Item D. I need a motion to open the public hearing on look for law number one of 2013, police department disciplinary proceedings.
Second.
Second. Okay, this time I ask Mr. Councilman Catarino to take over this portion of the meeting, since he is the police liaison and probably more familiar. If there's any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, I'll just make my portion brief, and then I'll ask Dennis to lead us through this. Because is there a resolution in here on this, Dennis?
There is.
Any resolution?
Yep.
I haven't seen it, but the long and short of it is, I have a copy of the decision from the appellate court from the town of Waukegan. And I'll just read a little excerpt since 1995. Collective bargaining agreement had been in place between Waukegan and the Waukegan Town Police Benevolance Association. In Waukegan pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement, police officers subject to discipline by the town have the right to a hearing before a neutral arbitrator. So, in 2007, the town adopted a local law number two set for disciplinary procedures for police officers different than those outlined in the collective bargaining agreement. Local law number two does not allow for arbitration, but rather requires the town board member or designate of the town board to conduct a hearing addressing the disciplinary charges. Now, what happens is, in the arbitration proceedings, it's very, very expensive. You get an independent third-party arbitrator to come in, and they're not actually part of it. So, they adopted a local law to bring all the disciplinary procedures under the guise of the town board. So, that's where we're at. And I'll just read, "A general law commits to the town the power and authority to adopt and make rules and regulations for the examination, hearing, investigation, and determination of charges made or preferred against any member or members of such police department." And the last line is, "Accordingly, the subject of police discipline resides with the town board and is a prohibited subject of collective bargaining between the town and the Waukegan PBA." So, that's what we're gonna do. It's gonna be prohibited from the collective bargaining agreement. Now, is that quite understandable? Are we okay with that?
Yeah, historically.
Okay, now he'll lead us through the legality.
Historically, that's what did happen in the town of Waukegan. What is before the town of Goshen is a proposed local law, which also obviates that portion of the town of Goshen PBA contract, which deals with discipline, the discipline hearings of charges brought against any of our police officers. Simply put, what occurred was, what Phil was referring to, that proposed local law was litigated up to the Court of Appeals. And the Court of Appeals, some of the quotes of which Phil gave to you, ruled that police discipline is not NOT, a proper subject for collective bargaining. It belongs in the purview of the town board for determination, investigation, and decision. And the officer and/or the charged or allegations made against the officer, they always have available to them due process the right to a hearing in front of, be it the town board or the town board's designate. But the concept of arbitration has been removed. The determination, initially, and this local law will be made by the chief of police, investigated, and some determination proposed. If either, any party at that point in time is aggrieved, it would come to the town board for final dissolution or dispensation or resolution. And if a party's agreed at that time, the remedy is for that party who feels aggrieved to take a proceeding to, if you will, the Supreme Court, vis-a-vis a petition, or what they call an Article 78 proceeding. No longer will just an arbitrator be appointed off of the state list, if you will, who would come in and arbitrate and make a decision which would be binding and final. What Goshen is proposing is to follow the protocol as approved by the Court of Appeals in the state of New York, the highest court in the state, as to what is permissible, what is allowed, and what is the law in the state of New York. And that is excerpted and verbatim in the two-page Chapter 29A amendment you see in your package, which I think is also available to the public.
Do you want me to read this resolution?
Yeah, at this time. Well, I don't know if there's any further comments.
Public hearing.
Right.
Is there anyone in the public who has a comment on this issue? Okay. Dan, you have to get a microphone open. We'll get you on the tape, please.
I think this is a very good idea. This avoids arbitration, saves some money, right?
Just for the record, you want to...
Of Dan Mario.
At the Miltonian Park.
At the Miltonian Park. And it also puts in a degree of objectivity, too, between rank of police chief and the officers. I think it's a very good idea, and I commend the board for taking this action. I just want to throw something in there. Along with the disciplinary process and review of the officers, I was thinking that if it would be possible to put maybe one or two residents involved with this to add another layer of objectivity to the process. And if you would consider that in the future.
I think in the text, we can do that, right?
I'm sorry?
Based on the text, we can do that, right? It can be a town board member or...
Absolutely. Propose it to the town board.
But you can get an advisory committee?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, you could do anything of that nature, but the ultimate...
That's not part of this resolution.
Right.
Correct. The ultimate decision would propose with, and must be made by the town board.
But you can't get an advisory committee.
Can you control a couple of people in the process and be called? Will it contribute a little to the process?
Yeah, they could either voluntarily or formally, but they would have no part of the decision. And why I say that, it's fair, and again, I'm sure as you know, public hearings are not for these colloquies like this, but because this is important, it should be clarified. What's important is here is that, again, a reposed with the town board, okay? And this exact format, this exact protocol, verbatim, was litigated. Supreme Court appellate division to the Court of Appeals, at a cost of probably $400,000. And as such, the only thing that's been officially legally approved is exactly that text. So, we're cautioned, and I would caution the board, about modifying it in any respect. But, point well taken. Intellectually, like Phil says, yeah, you can have as many advisory people involved as possible, but there's a separation on the decision.
You've got to adhere to this.
We adhere to this knowing this is proper, this is permissible, and it's valid to be legal or constitutional. That's why we're adhering so strictly to that.
Okay.
But the board would take that into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mario. Anyone else in the public out there and comments on this? Okay, have a motion to... Or is it a pleasure, gentlemen, keep it open? You want to close it?
No, we can close it.
Okay. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Okay, I'll second it. Now, next question.
You're gonna take a roll call vote on closure?
Yeah. Well, just on closure?
I'm just on the closure.
Okay. Roll call, call, vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Catarino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
I think Supervisor Kennewall?
Aye.
Even I had a stutter, thank you. Now, gentlemen, what a pleasure. Would you like to think about this? You want to vote on this today? You want to table it? Are you prepared to vote on this?
I'm prepared to vote on it.
I'm prepared. I have the resolution. I was gonna say, Ms. Keno, would you mind reading this resolution? Bringing this to a halt, please?
Okay. The town of Goshen resolution, adoption of local law number one of 2013, amendment to the code of the town of Goshen, Chapter 29A, entitled Police Department Disciplinary Hearing Proceedings. Whereas a local law, being local law number one of 2013, a copy of which is annexed heretofore, was introduced at a meeting of the town board of the town of Goshen at a regular meeting of said board on January 10, 2013. And whereas a legal notice was published in the Independent Republican newspaper notifying the general public that a public hearing with respect to said local law, number one of 2013, was to be held at 7:35 PM or resumed thereafter as the matter could be heard at Town Hall, 41 Webster Avenue, Goshen, New York, on February 14, 2013. And whereas said town board of the town of Goshen did hold a public hearing on February 14, 2013, at Town Hall, town of Goshen, with respect to the adoption of local law number one of 2013, whereat all interested persons were given an opportunity to comment in favor or in opposition to proposed law. And now, therefore be it resolved, that the town board of the town of Goshen, having conducted and closed the public hearing with respect to proposed local law number one, 2013, does hereby adopt local law number one, 2013, as written and as proposed upon roll call vote.
Some of these to move.
Have a motion to move the resolution.
So, no move?
Okay.
Do you second?
Yeah.
Roll call, vote.
I'm sorry, discussion. I have a correction on the Chapter 29A Police Department Disciplinary Hearing Procedures.
My...
Page two, Dennis, 25-8-6. You go down there where it says the decision should be viewed by the town board, and after its review, the town wrote... You gotta give me a line. Oh, I see it, I see it. You see it? It says town wrote instead of town board? Yeah, that should be board. Okay. Was that the same one, George?
No, I have the one on the first page, and I thought we had corrected it already. But 29-8-4, disciplinary interview, next to the last line, Chief shall refer the notice to the town board for determination of the charges. And then there's a period there. I think the period should be struck.
Okay, I gotta know which line we're in.
Second to the last.
Chief shall provide a copy of the chief's decision to the town board on interest of the chief's decision.
And the period regarding charges. That should be struck, and it said, "And then, the proposed resolution of the charges." I believe that's the way it should be.
On interest of the decision, Chief shall refer the notice to the town board. Yes, that's correct, correct.
I think we corrected that one already.
We did, yeah.
But that's the correction.
Yeah, again, I think probably what happened was the text got confused, meaning wasn't substituted for... So, yes, so those two changes would be, one, as indicated in Section 29A hyphen four, next to the last line, remove the period, and the language "and" added. And then on the second page, Priscilla, Section 29A hyphen six, fourth line, at three-quarters of the way through, after the word "the town" instead of "row" should be "board." All right? And those are ministerial, not in any way substantive as such.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anybody else? Any other comments before we call a local vote? Madam Clerk, please.
Councilman Catarino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
I think Supervisor Kennewall?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Dennis. Under old business...
I'm sorry, before you want, this is protocol. Priscilla, tax-wise, I'll correct it and give it to you tomorrow, because we have to file with the Secretary of State, as you know, as the office or ballot has to certify it. So, I'll supply that to you.
Under old business, I'm a little lost at issue number one, discussing the approved motion to modify the Goshen Town tow policy. Mr. Complique, can you help us on this one?
Sure. Yeah, as you know, the normal practice, protocol in the town or any municipality is to provide for agenda items and specify or recite them in the affirmative. As you know, we're still working on the Goshen tow policy, and I believe Supervisor Bluefield put that on the agenda, knowing we were still working on it, in the event we did, in fact, conclude it, or we were in a position to conclude it. Just status-wise, for the board's attention, we've now solicited any number of protocols, ordinances, and existing policies in other towns, but we have not correlated them yet. And as such, my office is not in a position to make a recommendation or supply any additional information to them.
Thank you. And just for the board's knowledge, Mr. Domestrop brought some information for us this evening, okay? Which I didn't pass up. Mr. Complique is gonna review that. Hopefully, that will help clarify this situation, okay?
So, I would just recommend that, man, or you just put on to a further agenda, table.
Table, it's a network session, I guess.
Yeah, or whatever agenda we decide to place it on.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Number two, I'm gonna ask George to put on this one. It says, "Discuss JRC plans for baseball field drainage improvements." I believe you might have stuck on that also, or...
Yes, there's actually, there's actually two letters here. I'll start, I'll take the first one. First, for information purposes, I went upstairs and spoke with Christine, and we received $36,000 just recently for Alphini subdivision. So, in the Parkland account, we now have $58,242. That's the amount.
So, that $2,000 was really $20,000?
According to her, yes.
Okay. You even questioned that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I did. And for our purposes tonight, even if it was $2,000, there still is enough. They can choose to do this.
I'm just trying to show the difference from the one reading to the next reading.
Right, right. Okay, so, as I told you, on Monday night, Tuesday night, we were having our monthly JRC meeting, and the Goshen Little League was there. It was represented by Dave Crawford. There's a letter there that's addressed to the JRC. The JRC basically approved all of the things that are on this particular letter here. And then, if you see down at the bottom of the first page, cost of the work is $15,000. This is the drainage improvements of the three fields, the boys' major field, boys' junior senior field, and the girls' softball field, to the tune of $15,000. And the way this breaks down is $5,000 is coming from the Little League, $5,000 from the village, and the proposed $5,000 from the town.
Okay, gentlemen, any comments in the board?
Sorry, I gotta put this on. I just have a question for Dennis, since they did come with a proposal. Does this have anything to do with the town going out to bid for this? I just want to make sure. Same question as you come up with the soccer. They went out and did this. Are we required to do it, going out to bid?
No.
Because the Little League's doing it, and we're passing the money on?
Yeah, no.
I just want to make sure.
Correct. Well, you'd be safe in the procedure, because my understanding is, the request is a monetary contribution to that organization, which they're gonna use for these purposes. It's similar to when we gave money to the Humane Society, and they constructed a structure or building, et cetera. Now, you can't use it as a subterfuge, but obviously, the intent here is, other than monetary contribution, we're not involved.
And the other question is that, when we pass this money on, should we be actually passing it on to JRC?
That is my question.
All right.
I assume that's the intention.
They're going to JRC to approve this. JRC's gonna oversee this, because it is JRC's. They manage it for us.
Right.
So, I just want to... So, we really passed the money on to them?
JRC.
To JRC. I just want to make sure.
My question is going to be almost identical, as far as protocol. Who should be asking for this money?
The JRC.
And not the individual?
Well, they can make a request.
They make requests, but who should formally ask for the money, so that we could cut the checks and go to the village and cut the checks to JRC? So, should they... Well, they approved it, but I...
Yeah, it would be nice to have that...
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. George would carry it back from there.
And I'm sure they have, but I don't...
Yeah, there was a resolution passed by the board last night approving this specific thing, contingent on the fact that the money was received from the Little League and the town and the village.
Okay, yeah. It would be nice for the board to follow that up and give us a copy of the text.
And it was a resolution?
Yes.
Cool.
Yes. There was resolutions for both.
Oh, okay. My only comment would be, in the future, it would be nice that they would give us copies of the resolutions.
Well, see, it was just last week.
I understand.
So, there won't be minutes, but there are minutes produced.
The proper way would be a resolution with a cover letter request that pursuant to the attached resolutions, which were adopted whenever, it's hereby requested to the town.
We're not denying it.
No, no, not much. We can do the same thing.
Correct. And as I said before, this is all contingent on the fact that there's money in the Parkland account, which apparently there is, and also the fact that we do receive the $5,000 from, or the JRC, I should say, receives the $5,000 from the village and the $5,000 from the Little League.
Has the village been asked for it?
I spoke to Kyle today, and Kyle said that they were meeting, and that his, although he couldn't speak for the board, he was in favor of it, yes. And Rory, Rory Brady, the liaison, spoke in favor of it at Tuesday night's meeting.
All right, gentlemen, do you want to act on this? Do you have a motion there to grant?
Okay. I'll make a motion that the town of Goshen enter into these improvements at Craigville Park to the total tune of $15,000. $5,000 coming from Parkland's account from the town of Goshen, contingent on the fact that we receive, or that the JRC receives, $5,000 from the Little League and $5,000 from the village, and that there's adequate money in the Parkland account.
No, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass 40. Thank you, George. You have one more for us?
Yes, I do. The next one is the soccer club. There's a letter there, and there's also a schematic of what they want to do. That's the third page. Essentially, what they are requesting here, it's on the front page. There's different projects that are being done. There's one project that's being done for $7,840 bucks that the JRC and the soccer club is doing. We're not involved in that financially. The next one is Project A, for a total cost of $7,680. That would be the cost, that would be the total cost to the town of Goshen. And then there's another, it's another project, but it's in the same area that the village is going to pick up, to the tune of $7,680. So, the total amount for this particular improvement in drainage is, for the town, $7,840.
No, $7,680.
Excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong one. $7,680.
George, you want to say to make a proposal?
Yes, I make a motion that...
Could I make a comment?
Put a motion on the floor that the town give to the JRC $7,680 for improvements at Craigville Park with drainage, contingent on the fact that the soccer gives their share of the monies that they total here, and that the village does their share to the same tune of us of $7,680, and that there's adequate money in the Parkland account in the town of Goshen.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Just trying to clear this up. Because they broke it up as A and B for the town and the village, and they also have C for themselves, it's very possible, I just want to try to make sure we cover ourselves, it's very possible they'll start Project A, which we're responsible for $7,680, and never get to Project B, and they're making it like that's the village. I would like to see it that regardless of what gets finished, A or B, we're 50/50. It's just the way it's written all year, that's all I'm saying. You know what I'm trying to say, George?
Yeah.
I think that could probably be accomplished, I'm assuming would be accomplished, by all entities donating the monies at the same time, so that they're, you know, accumulated and utilized.
I was just going on the record.
No, I was there.
Because everything was gonna happen, maybe they don't finish the other one, and it's the following year, and we paid for something, and the voters didn't chip in. This is a 50/50 proposition.
The operative word in the resolution should be donation, town to the JRC, and that it's, the protocol is that all monies from the three entities would be co-mingled and acquired at the same time.
Who would donate?
Who would what?
Donate them.
Who would donate which?
Yeah, the donation by the JRC, by the Little League, the soccer people.
Correct.
We're not donating it to them, are we?
We were donating it to the JRC.
Let's...
The town.
The town agency. Why would we donate something to the town agency?
Because otherwise, you're gonna get into a collective bargaining bid situation. This is an aggregate program. You got $21,000. You're gonna kick it into the public work.
They don't wages.
They don't wages and everything else.
Yep, bidding process.
Yeah. We're just more or less evolved. It's a technicality. We're donating, transferring the monies, if you will, to and through the JRC.
Right. Is that okay, George? You want to fight up the resolution?
That's fine.
Madam Clerk, you can get that different differential. Thank you. Any other questions? Hey, then I guess I'll call for a roll. And we'll just call for all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thanks, thank you, George.
Lose your post? Move on.
He never does that in dog shows.
He's eating on me for the last couple of meetings.
He knows he has to give me one.
Yeah.
I can't give you my favorite comment, because we're in front of you.
Under new business, the first issue under new business, is discuss and approve a resolution to oppose the proposed changes being made by Governor Forma to limit local governments to plea bargain traffic tickets and for adding an $80 surcharge for each violation processed.
No move.
Second.
Okay. And Dennis, we have to read this, as submitted.
As submitted, and as the board knows, we discussed this. The procedures of eliminating or strictly enforcing the plea bargaining aspects would be just a nightmare for the courts. You would never be able to get anything done. It would be very inefficient, it would be very, very costly administratively and staff-wise to the local justice courts. And we all told them that municipality's the state of New York. And secondly, the $80 surcharges, same comments, and all those monies... And secondly, the $80 surcharge, same comments, and all those monies would be going to the state, and yet, you know, mandated, we have no subsidy and/or allocation for funds to defray the costs.
Right, any comments in the board?
Well, just what, we all got this in our packet here, and it says specifically right there, that Governor Formos states that the state loses $58 million a year due to plea bargains. So it's, in my mind, it's just a money grab, that's all it, what it comes down to. Maybe they could, they could care less whether it puts all this work on the individual courts or reduces the amount of monies that would be in the municipalities. If anything, as I said Monday night, I'll say it again, if anything, they should have given us more money.
That's right.
Not less money.
And you can't lose something that you didn't make. So they're using the term they lose money, but those monies have never gone to the state, and they don't belong there.
And just so that.
We do it work, and they have money.
Even more important, as you know, how the courts operate, that the plea bargain, by definition, is just a breaking down or a lowering, if you will, of the cause of action, and eventual penalty. It's within the judge's discretion, at certain levels, to maintain or even express higher penalties or impose higher penalties. So what they're doing here structurally, I know where they're going, and I agree with your comments about the money aspect, but what they're doing is, they're going to force the municipalities to any number of trials.
Absolutely.
Which are tremendously costly and time-consuming, as opposed to, if you've ever been involved in anything like this, a plea bargain, which can be done in a matter of minutes, as long as it's fair, and done with full information and honestly approached.
And the ultimate benefit of this law would go to the insurance companies, because with the points system, they would get tremendously higher premiums.
Right.
Because of the points. So I'm thinking the lobby of the insurance people, the ones that are really pressing this particular issue.
That would certainly be one of ramifications.
You know, so anyway.
Possibly, possibly it's the attorneys, too. All those amount of trials?
Hey, you know, let me say this to you, as Matt knows, we have to prosecute these. And, let me tell you, you really don't want to pay, we don't, with taxes or tariffs, and litigation in general, you really do not want to pay a staff attorney to pursue only. In certain instances, as you know, they must be pursued, they have to be prosecuted. In many instances, it's a resolution where there are still points involved, different charge, still a fine levied, it's just a matter of discretion on the part of the court to prosecute.
To me, it's just another way of getting taxpayers' dollars without taxing them, first of all. Secondly, if you remember when all this crunch came down a few years ago, you know, DEC does a good job, but all of a sudden, there was a shortage of money in New York State, and all of a sudden, you had DEC people visiting every municipal garage and gas stations all over the state. And there was a lot of fines, a lot of things to do. I just feel like it's a money trade. Secondly, no, $80 is a lot of money for people, especially when they're probably paying a couple hundred dollars for the fine, and they should have a right to plea bargain. The other thing here, I see, if you went on here, and I'm going to read it so people know, suspend the driver's license of anyone who owes more than $10,000 in overdue taxes. Isn't that?
Yeah.
We're not talking about child support here, we're talking about people's taxes.
Yeah, interesting concept, that they would use the municipal criminal system. To enforce the collection of taxes, which they have any number of procedures, including INRAM foreclosures, et cetera, to collect those monies. It's, I'm sorry, well, again, with all my political comments, but obviously, it's economic considerations.
I just get upset about this, because, you know, we do the 2% cap, we do our damnedest, and they don't do anything to participate in trying to keep things down.
They just pass the mandate, and they expect you to spend the funds.
And we're the lowest end of government, so we, by being the lowest end of government, we are really affecting our constituents, because our constituents are the ones that see us, we break bread together, we go to church, we go to the girls, we do all that. They're sitting up there on the ivory tower, and they just pass all these damn things on. I'm just appalled by it. Really, I'm tired of it.
I'll move the motion.
Thank you for my comments.
Do we have a second, then? Did we have a second?
Yeah, we had discussion.
Okay, my only important, at the last paragraph, is it's Supervisor Tannenbaum, who authorized, blah, blah, blah. Now, do we want to send this out right away? I mean, if we wait for Mr. Bluefield to come back, and who do we send it to? To each individual legislator?
Yeah, we'll send it to our legislators.
Our legislators and the governors.
Okay, I just know one, do it right away, okay, no problem. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Technical thing on the second page, it says 5-0, resolution carried by.
That should be, that should be 4-0. It does require a roll call vote, if you would.
Okay.
Councilman Cansarino.
Aye.
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.
Councilman Capella.
Aye.
Acting Supervisor Ken Newball.
Can you say it again, who?
Oh, aye.
And who's the moving in the second?
Phil.
I moved it. And Lou?
Yes.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number two under new business, discuss and pass a resolution to name two roads in the A and L Acres subdivision. The first name would be Paradise Valley Lane, and the second one is Chief's Way.
Yes, the board's application, as you know well, was checked, there are no conflicts in the road names, they are not objectionable in and of themselves, and as such, you're free, if you're so inclined, to propose that they be accepted.
I'll move, I'll make a motion to, we accept it, and then second, then what, discussion?
Second, okay. Discussion.
Okay. I found out how these names came about, and Chief's, what is it, Chief's Way, in Paradise Valley Lane. Well, the developer's father, his nickname is the Chief, they called him the Chief, so they named it Chief's Way, and his mother lived on Paradise Valley Lane in Italy. It's translated differently in Italian, but that's where the two, because I said, these are pretty unusual names, right? So I talked to the developer, and that's where they came. Just a point of interest, that's all.
We did look into Bluefield Boulevard, but.
Did either one of them do that?
That didn't get any traction, right?
Try to have the Miami-Bastie Highway. That thing, Columbus, Christopher Columbus Drive, too. Some names don't make it past the board, I don't know why. But okay, on a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Cansarino.
Aye.
Councilman Lyons.
Aye.